A meeting of the Manchester Planning Board. Call to order. Rules call attendance. Brian Fry.
Yes.
Peter Martin.
Yeah.
Jordan Brewster.
Yeah.
Miss Olley.
Yeah.
Phil Brick is here. We have forum. I think the first order of business is discussion of proposed new downtown zoning district. So, Mark, do you wanna give us the summary?
Okay. So, building up of our downtown visiting visioning sessions and then the last meeting. In which Kathy McCabe was here to present her findings, we talked about. Rezoning the downtown area into its own district that. The general district rules don't really work for traditional. Downtown area that. But the general district is much larger. The downtown only comprises about twenty percent of the entire. General district, so. We talked about it really kind of makes sense to create your one's own district for the downtown and have very specific rules. That would allow more of the types of things in uses and building footprints and lot coverages. That would be more appropriate for a traditional village center, so. What I put together is kind of the first step. Towards doing that, which was a. I went through the our current use table. And also added a few new uses and also went through our dimensional table and parking requirements. And that that's kind of the introductory part as well as I prepared a map of. Of a downtown district. Pretty much very similar to most of the maps that we were seeing during our visioning sessions where we had that. That during the workshop. You're able to draw a map, and so what I did is I tried to include most of the current. Businesses that are located right along Central and Beach Street. And then going up Summer Street and Elm Street as well, so. I didn't really expand the district. Beyond where is currently kind of the core area of commercial. That is something that over time can be done. And again, the map can be changed at town meeting. And the areas around this district are still zoned. In the general district, so we're not changing the rest of the general district, so. Unless you're located in a small area, there would be no change to the zoning requirements that. Those property owners already. Are restricted by, so.
So, just for clarification. Is the entire. Proposed downtown district currently all in the general district or does it go into? Some of the other zoning districts?
Look at this and say, yeah, so. The, what do you mean? So, everything, everything in this new downtown district is, well, not actually not everything in this new downtown district is general district.
So, what parts would not be in the?
Some of the parts that are not is the. Is at the end of Beach Street on at the end of Beach Street, but the section of Beach Street where you cross the railroad tracks. And you have the large plaza on the left. That is.
Harbor Point?
Yeah, Harbor Point plus the. Additional five or six properties along Beach Street, like where the ice cream shop are. Would be our zone, Zone A.
Well, those are in District A.
So, those are in District A.
And any other areas that are not currently in the general district?
No.
One thing that might be helpful is for. The board to take a walk similar to what we did with MBTA zoning. And doing our density walk and then our walks of each of the districts. It might be helpful once we get a little further. Down the line of. Changing zoning might be helpful to take a walk to. Show folks exactly the properties that are included in a potential new downtown district. Just something to think.
So, I have a question. So, Mark, why is ten and twelve Beach Street not included in that downtown? Since it's already mixed use?
Well, it's, it's, it's part of, as best as I could tell, I believe it's part of the larger. Property, maybe they're all condos.
They are all condos.
Okay, so that's why I didn't include it.
Ten and twelve is right on the north side of Summer Street.
With the flower shop and the coffee shop.
Right here.
Yeah.
So, that's why I didn't include it because it was part of the larger. Property, which includes the condos in the back.
Well, is there any reason not to include the condos in the back?
So, this doesn't include the Laughing Gull either?
Right.
Definitely.
Building right there.
That's in the building.
Now, that's in the MBTA zoning overlay district, so. It may not be an important. Which district it's in, but. And I'm not gonna die on this hill.
Is it something that you would like to see included, Chris?
I would, from a practical point of view, yes, but I'm, like I say, it's not. It's not critical because it's already developed and doing very well as it is. But I think it does meet the intent of what this new downtown development district is about.
I just offer a personal observation. I looked, I've got the zoning map right here and I can see the general district and it defines everything it defined. And then if I don't have the MBTA zoning district, but it defines what it defines. And now I look at this one and it defines what it defines, it's all, there, there are a lot of them are the same. But then there's little pieces of them that are not. Is there a reason? Would that, would that, would that not cause confusion when somebody goes to develop something here? If he has to refer to three different zones overlay the top of this thing and you may be the little finger that's outside of that. Does it make sense to have a more consistent look?
No, this is.
Just a question.
This down, this development district. I thought it was gonna be an overlay district, but it's not. It's actually changing. It's a new district. It's a new underlying district.
So, so it's.
So, the MBTA overlay would overlay this.
Correct.
So, how would that be different than the general district? Because the general district down this district and the MBTA?
No, 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 no.
This, this area in here would no longer be the general district.
Ah, okay.
A new base zoning district because there's no advantage to keeping. The general district zoning. A lot of the uses are gonna be fairly similar and we'll go through that. And there's not a big distinction, the distinction. Aside from allowing a few more uses and allowing mixed use and and other things, reduce setbacks, there's not huge changes, but the changes are important enough. In order to facilitate a more vibrant village development over time and in future.
So, to the simple minded myself, yeah, this district would be defined, if I look at the the overall town. I would have a new district here defining this thing, so I I have still a little bit of the general district light blue. On here and a little bit of here and a little bit there.
Right.
And it would surround this district as a big town, okay?
The area, it's only about twenty percent of the overall area of the general.
Okay, then you cleared up my confusion.
Well, it's a good question. One of the things I figured is gonna come up with.
Right, absolutely, it's asked you.
More lines. Mark, what are we supposed to acknowledge the yellow here?
Oh, no, that's just, yeah.
Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Ignore the yellow?
Ignore the yellow, yeah.
So, go on, enter.
Okay, so I I did put the map up on the screen for, I believe people at home can see that. That we are keeping it well defined into a very, a limited area and so. And so that's, that's really. The map and the reasoning for the map. I I did include. The town, the rest of the land behind Town Hall, Senior Center. Well, what soon to be wastewater treatment plant and parking lot. I just thought it makes sense to keep it all contiguous within the downtown district.
So, that's another broader question, Mark. What's the distinguishing characteristics of the downtown district?
Well, you would, you would allow for greater density, reduce setbacks, a few additional uses that you wouldn't be permitted in the. Rest of the general district, so you're trying to create. Some uniqueness to the, to the downtown area. I'm proposing that we do include design review as well so that. And that we utilize the design reviews that we set up for the chart. That was approved today by EO HLC. People that haven't heard, that's approved.
So.
That's good, thank you.
Another observation on geography and what is included. There are currently some residences in this area.
Yeah, a lot.
So, what are your thoughts on that?
So, obviously, those residences, I believe, would still be permitted. I, we did not prohibit single-family dwellings in this district. And so they are still allowed use and continue to remain.
So, go on, sorry.
So. So, that you're getting into the various uses, so if you would like, you can go to the use chart.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let me see if I can't, what was this and open the use chart? Downtown district, yeah, oh. There it is. So. So, the. The first part is directly from our bylaw. I didn't change that because we're not changing how things are designated. But then we get to the. The use and I called the downtown district simply the downtown district. It's the first column. And I used it and I did put the general district because most of this area is in the general district. So, as a comparison, and so I didn't make too many changes, but there are a few as we go through. So, the first one is single family. I left that the same as a permitted use. Two-family, I put as a planning board special permit. Again, I don't think we wanna really encourage new two-family uses in the district. Last one is was a tiny bit controversial. So, so conversion of a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling, again, I made that planning board special permit. And as well as con- conversion of a dwelling into a three-family dwelling. So, we're multifamily units, not more than four units. I said no. Residential conversion clusters, no, it's not gonna. All up there anyways. So, those were the our current residential uses, so there's no change to the residential.
Okay, so I have a question about very first one, a single-family detached dwelling. So, that would mean that someone could buy a cargo and tear it down and build a single-family house there.
Yes, but provided. There's another use.
Did you get interested somewhere?
So, there's another new use that I am proposing. That says if you're gonna convert, conversion of first floor commercial space to residential.
Right.
That would be a special permit. Or residential uses on the first floor of the building would be a special permit, so that's.
Well, that's fine unless you wanna build a single-family house, in which case you should just do it. And so I'd like to propose that that yes be PB. Single-family house.
Okay.
What's your point, Chris? I'm sure I.
So, we're trying to encourage commercial uses in the downtown with residential above it. But if you're, if you're just allowing a single-family house, that means you can just build a single-family house by right. Without any commercial use at all. And we don't, I don't think we want to encourage new single-family houses in the downtown.
That's a good point. So, we would say not allowed?
No, it's a allowed with a special permit. From the planning board, just to, we don't, we're not gonna disallow single-family houses. We just don't, we prefer them. It depends on the site, of course. Maybe somebody's gonna have a great idea for a single-family house. You need approval.
Does the detached dwelling matter here? It says detached dwelling.
Well, again, I think the fact that detached, I mean, if you're trying to create density in the downtown instead of out in the neighborhoods. We want to encourage single-family houses in the neighborhoods, but in the downtown. Putting a single-family house there kind of, you know, it takes, takes away the density, really.
So presumably, if we had a commercial space downtown and if it died. And somebody owned it, they could tear down building and build a single.
Single-family house, yeah, a garage and a front yard. Like the hardware store, let's say Alan goes out of business. So, he, so he sells it and somebody comes in and builds a single-family house and plans to put the yard there.
So, definitely something to think about. For the single-family homes that are there already.
My grandfather.
Do you wanna just explain how that works?
So, if you're, well, maybe let Mark explain.
Well, they, they would be considered pre-existing non-conforming use. And so they would, of course, be able to continue to remain and as such and.
They could be added to.
But hopefully, over time, they would be converted, renovated, added to. As the success, hopefully, of the downtown core becomes a little more vibrant and busier. With the additional commercial uses, but then again, you walk into many very busy downtown areas. There are mixed-in residential uses scattered about, so it doesn't mean that they're actually gonna go away. They just are another facet of. But I don't think you wanna, like Chris says, encourage.
So, if I, if I listen to what Chris says, I. I listen to many Chris says.
That's your problem.
The, the idea, what, what is our end, end game here? It's not, it's not necessarily to build single-family homes, is that?
That's good.
Okay, so, so would we not allow single-family homes? If someone had that commercial space, it died. They couldn't immediately put up a single-family home.
Yes, it would have to go through the special permit process.
And that's all the uses.
It's a no. Then you couldn't, you can't get a special permit, you couldn't build a single-family.
What would be, what would be our reasoning for saying no? There would be.
I think there's an argument to be made to say no, but I don't think. I think we want to have some flexibility in that what the downtown looks like.
I guess that's. Kind of with the question I'm delving into here. If we, if we say that they can build a single-family home down there. And basically we're saying whether it's special permit or not. That would mean they, they could and that, does that meet what our, our long-term goal wants to be? I offer that as a question, not as a suggestion.
Yeah, I think our long-term goal is to allow residential uses in the downtown, but not as a single-family home, but as an accessory to. Additional commercial use, whether it be residential in the back or upstairs or basement apartments. To maintain and enhance the commercial uses, so. So, I think Chris's suggestion kind of pushes properties in that, that direction.
So, let's. Say it remit, it. We, we change to planning board special permit. So, we have a hearing, someone wants to tear down a current commercial business. What would be our. Reasoning and how would we legitimately be able to say no? You can't turn a commercial into a single-family when single-family is allowed with a special permit. I mean, what, what conditions would we put on that to avoid changing commercial that?
So, we would, so we would have to rely on our performance standards. And they would say it's gotta be within the context of the surrounding neighborhood, so if the surrounding neighborhood is all stores. It wouldn't be appropriate to have a single-family house stuck in the middle of it.
Well, so, I, I'm just. I'm not asserting a position one way or the other, but take your example apart. So, there are single-family homes across the street, and single-family homes behind. And there's a single-family home on at least one side.
Yeah.
So. I, I'm just trying to see how it would play out.
In that case, the context would be single-family home, it's okay.
Well, not necessarily.
Commercial space into one.
Changing use.
Yeah, the change of use.
Just things to think about.
And, and remember what Jim was saying, Jim Brown was saying last meeting too, about mandating.
Yeah.
That's, that was his biggest fear.
Yeah.
Well, what exactly?
The chamber, the head of chamber.
Wire the commercial building, we might just end up with a vacant.
Yeah, 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 this is, this is a bit of a challenge here.
So, one other question. In the general district. Currently. Where we have the whys. I can't remember. Is it by special permit?
No, those are by right.
They are by right, okay, so you're changing the, that for a two-family. The conversion of a one to two and another to require a special permit. So, what's your thinking there?
Well, the second thing, if they can provide a valid reason why it fits into the neighborhood and the context. You know, maybe it's a way of preserving a historic home by making it a two-family. And, you know, it's a really old historic building, which we have several, you know. In the district, but making it two units instead of one. Might be a way of preserving the historic structure, so, you know, so allowing for it. You know, but again, it's a special permit, you have to meet the criteria.
But you're changing it from current by right to your special permit. That, that's what I'm. Trying to figure out when folks ask.
What about a single-family that has commercial on the first floor?
That's.
Some single-family.
Yeah.
That's a mixed use.
Okay.
All right, onward.
Okay. Then we get to, again, all these uses and their descriptions are exactly, are, are what we currently have, so. We haven't gotten to any proposed changes. So, use of land, so most of these are the community uses, which are almost all the same. Use of land structures for religious purposes, educational purposes, childcare. Municipal uses, charities, so those are all permitted under the general and we're still permitting them under the downtown district. Then there's a couple of planning board special permits, which is for charitable or philanthropic. Use hospitals, nursing care facilities, sanitariums. I left that as a planning board, because that's a huge. Group there. I don't know whether you really want to leave that as a. Or whether that you wanna make that a no.
Which one, Mark?
Number six.
Six.
Yeah. B six.
Why would you make?
Well, if you make it a no.
Yeah. Oh.
Maybe a terrible.
Right.
That could be a gallery.
Yeah, or Greenbelt wants to have their office there.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, they've grouped in hospitals, nursing care facilities and sanitariums into charitable or philanthropic. Use, so. So, somebody having an office, which you wanna encourage is. The others you may not want, but it's, it's all in one group, so.
Because that's how it is now.
Because that's how it is now. That was correct. So.
But if you wanted to open a sanitarium, you would have to come before the planning board.
Yes.
So, I understand why you, why you do that, Mark, because it's just, that's how the general district is done right now. And to, to avoid having to break up the uses into a whole separate thing.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, you would take charitable and philo-.
Philanthropic.
That's the word, philanthropic uses, you know, and that would be a separate line item, because really it's mostly a, a. You know, office use, or you could even say charitable and philanthropic office uses. As a sep- separate line item and then hospitals, nursing, sanitariums are very, all very similar and that would be a different line item. So, if you wanted to make some adjustments to this chart, that would be a way of doing it and then you can split those out and. Allow the charitable and philanthropic uses as permitted uses. Because they probably shouldn't even come to the planning board for a special permit. They should be permitted, while the other ones you could probably would not want and. Because they really don't provide, none of them, a lot of vibrancy to a downtown area, so you'd wanna say no.
Some of these might become go-bro. Some of these might become go bro amendment things.
Well, that's why I kind of left the religious uses and the educational ones, I just left them all as a yes, so.
So the um, the other issue is for. This one area that is currently A. And gets turned into downtown district. A doesn't currently have many of these uses. So that's a big change.
That's the reality of.
It is, that's the reality, right?
But most of that area that is A is used commercially.
There's maybe one or two residences there.
Yeah, along um.
Right, sorry for interrupting.
Yep, no, no, no.
So I noticed A cemetery.
Yeah, that's tough with being an end, so.
Cemetery not conducted for profit. So, are are we going to number nine now under community facilities? Because public utility or public communications building? There's some, is there already?
Yeah, well, there's the um. The national, is it National Grid or telephone building just past the dry cleaner? I left that out of the downtown district. If you look at that, I believe I stopped at that building, so.
Maybe we should include it though, because who knows?
We could always make a zoning change in this.
Well, we could, I mean, we haven't done it yet, so we could include.
Yes, but it's certainly something to think about, but. I mean, ideally you would still make that a no if you included it in the district. Because you don't, you would wanna promote its eventual redevelopment when it's no longer necessary for. Whatever it's used for.
What is the communications building, I wonder?
I mean, a telephone company buries a building or something, then.
So is that building in A?
Uh, no, it's in um. It's in the uh, general.
It is, okay, alright.
Yeah, all those, uh, even the house at the top of it, uh, just, just past that is in. General district. Then the next use, uses are the agricultural uses. And um, so non nuisance agricultural, horticulture, floriculture, I said, yes.
That's the flower shop, right? Right, something like a flower shop or?
No, I think it's grow- growing things too.
Right, there's more for growing. So um, greenhouse nursery uses for horticultural and floricultural. I mean, it's allowed now, I said no, but.
Well, there was a greenhouse, but that was behind there. But there is a florist, but that would be in one.
Being probably under just a regular commercial. Yeah.
What is nuisance agriculture? Is that like marijuana, Spencer?
That has its own.
Well, that would be the raising and keeping of livestock, including poultry, which is number three.
Why, sorry, Mark, why would you say no to two? The greenhouse nursing uses for horticultural and. I mean, something like a chapins or something, isn't that, would that be in that category? Uh, Beverly on West Street. Yeah, with that, I mean, they're tucked away in some neighborhoods. And they, you know, they attract business. I'm just wondering whether.
Yeah, what would be the downside of including?
So a greenhouse can be, a retail, have a retail shop in front of it, which is good. But it could just be a greenhouse where no one goes there at all.
Oh, we could make it a special permit, so at least it's.
Yeah, that might be.
Like, let's say the hardware store wanted to start a. Have a greenhouse added on the side. Then we get to the commercialists. So the first one is business, professional office buildings, banks and financial institutions. Uh, kept that a yes. Uh, office of a doctor, dentist or other member of a recognized profession. Uh, yes, as well, medical office building for not more than three doctors. Not sure why, but in the general district, that's CBA special permit, I think that should just be a permitted use.
Chris, do you have any knowledge of the history of that? Why is CBA is our number three?
It may be just because your general district has a lot of residential areas included in it. So um, that might be reason for that, but here we're. Pretty much come, trying to confine it to just a truly commercial district, so. Uh, general retail uses, obviously a yes, personal and general services, a yes, restaurants are a yes. Indoor recreation club of facility is not allowed in the general, but I put it as a special planning board special permit. So um.
Remember in the forum, there was a lot of interest in like entertainment.
Yeah, I mean, so for example, I guess the Legion Hall would be considered a club. And it's in the district that we're talking about, and if someone wanted to do another type of indoor. Facility by membership, you know, it brings people here for. Activity.
An oceanfront establishment.
So um. So we're up to eight. Printing and publishing establishment, uh, we left that as a why, yes. Yeah, storage, construction and services and related uses, so. Way this district is currently constructed, we don't have any of those uses in here. Because we tried to confine it, so I made it, um, not permitted. Don't think our boat ramp and. I act storage and stuff really would would count there, it's not the same thing.
What if someone wanted to open like a West Marine?
Well, that would, that's.
Okay, so that's not in this.
Yeah, so, so that would be like our um, our Crosby. Yes, Crockers and Manchester Marine would be those types of facilities. And they're not being affected by this at all, it'd still be a permitted use, cause they're, they remain in the general district. Uh, fish shell fishing, landing, storage, handling. But not a fish processing or a similar plant, so I put that as a no, but again, that's something. I know our, our commercial uh, dock is, is um. Over off of Mascanomo Park, which is not being included. I, I, I don't know whether, I, I don't wanna really preclude anything. Like this, but I mean, what if, trying to think if someone opened a uh, like lobster pool. Where that would, would, that would be mostly. Perhaps a retail place, but, but it could also be. They could also do um. Do that wholesale it out of there as well, like in, as many of the. Like in Rockport, there's a place about halfway down on the right that's been there for as long as I can remember.
So I have a question regarding that you brought up Crockers and Manchester Marine, that's a part of the general district? So no retail permitted, right?
Yeah, we're not, uh, well, we're, no, no.
So if they wanted to open like an ice cream shop for them.
So um. So I don't know whether you want that, a no or a planning board special permit perhaps.
I don't know if that goes well with a mixed use.
But being in a waterfront locale where you do have fishing.
What if it was like a pop-up shop or a, a food truck situation where they sell on shellfish?
Well, that's, that's the thing, it's then that would not be permitted, really, so that's why I'm thinking maybe it should be a planning board special permit. The more we're talking about it, the more I'm thinking. That may not be necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah, no, Brian made a good point, it is, cause we talked, that was a big interest in the forum too, where. Were uh, food trucks, things like that.
Okay, wind energy conversion systems, they're already a no. I don't know what W E C F.
That's wind energy conversion, isn't it? I had that question too, Mark. I don't know what the F stands for.
But, but uh, it's, it's no now and I propose it to still be a no. Uh, large step scale solars installation. Uh, parking or garaging of automobiles, not incidental to another permitted use.
You know, if they tore down the cargo and put a parking lot there, that's not gonna help anybody.
Well, but it could, you know, like what if you wanted to deck the town hall lot? Or, or you, or you redevelop the um. A big, what do you call it? Or like, uh, just across the railroad tracks behind Crosby.
Mascanomo?
I never remember what that's called. You, and you wanted to put a, a deck on, on there in the back.
So wouldn't that be, so what, but this would just allow just the deck and nothing else?
Yeah, well, just parking, yeah.
Personally, I think structured parking kills uh, kills the areas.
I mean, I, I'd say special permit, I'd say special permit if it's.
I mean, it's a special permit now.
Yeah, keep it. It's special permanent now? So you're saying it's make it special for me again? I'm just saying, I've seen, frankly, I've built too many structured parking, it has a tendency to, there's neutering there. Strips the personality out of it. I park runner in the backyard and re-park would have perfect.
I made that a no.
That's good.
Uh, marijuana, adult entertainment and um, labs are also.
So just curious, Mark, sorry, because you've been pretty consistent with the general and the downtown district zoning. I mean. Why wouldn't we allow a special permit for someone who wants helicopter landing storage or park facility?
You don't want people laying the helicopters in the downtown.
It might be an, an amusement, right? Well, no, I'm, I'm somewhat serious, because in that, um, in the forum too, they're like, how about events? What can you do for events?
I can land in Mascanomo Park.
Right, they need a bigger area, then there's no, there's not a big enough. Unless you cleared out a parking lot back here, what land helicopters, but then.
Yeah.
You, you don't really have.
There's a special permit for that in the general district. So if you wanna build one on top of your house.
By individual events aren't covered by zoning, an event is a different thing.
So then we get up to accessory uses. They left most of these the same, um, up to four borders. Um, I left that a yes, uh, maintaining any lot. Not more, maintaining on any lot, not more than one commercial vehicle, I left that a yes. Um, garaging or maintaining more than four automobiles, one accessory to a dwelling. I left that CBA. Tennis courts, similar courts, one accessory to a dwelling, I left that as CBA. Uh, swimming pools, accessory to a dwelling, CBA. Accessory dwelling units, now we've removed that, I believe, from our use chart.
Should we put it back in?
Uh, well, no. No, because uh, we're still waiting, we're still waiting AG's approval of our current bylaw that, which is why I left it blank. Cause that comes out.
Shouldn't it say yes across all the districts, every residential?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check, well, won't, by our next meeting, we'll have heard from the AG. So I'll correct that line to the way we adjust this zoning by law.
And could we allow more? I don't know how many are allowed. How many are allowed under the current bylaw, do you know? Is it unpaid?
Well, that's. Yeah. It's kind of big, yeah, and the law's intention was done by the state specifically to keep it there. So.
Okay, how, we can touch on this later?
Yes, yeah, well, I'm sure we will. But I think by our next meeting, we'll have the AG's. So. Um, and then number seven, I believe, also goes away as part of an existing structure, stable. Living quarters for an employee. So that, that definitely went away. Uh, then customary home occupation. Home occupation conducted in a dwelling by a person residing on a premises is still permitted. And then we get to accessory uses or structures on the same lot. Uh, within customarily incidental to a permitted main use on the same premises, including off-street parking, yes. Family daycare or a home daycare for large is a ZVA, which is what it is in the general district. Family daycare small is a yes, I believe that might be protected use. Um, adult social daycare, this is CBA, but that's the same.
What is that? Not very, uh, getting there.
Yeah, it's when you, you, you can't be quite left alone at home. I don't know in your case. And then others, uh, matters, including the construction or alteration of any structure used therein, all or any part is, which is. Within the mean tideland lying below the mean high water. So that's where we often review dock, seawalls, that kind of stuff, so I left that. So then. I felt that at least a few uses um we ought to add. Oh, and so one is a hotel or inn.
He did get a lot of uh. P tack on. Or what, something small.
Something small, an option.
Well, some people want, who knows once this becomes.
Bigger discussion.
What the general feeling will be, but there there was a great deal of interest in something small.
We may have to go back to a special permit, but I don't think it's been a try here.
Now, also you'll notice since I've added it as a new use, I prohibited it in all the other districts with one exception. I did add it as a permitted use from the um L C. Which is across the highway, which is where we have two highway exits. And I thought it might be a good use to permit over there.
Yeah, you might have people come in to sell signal to stay too.
Right, they they do have additional development land on the days too, so. So hel- helicopter landing and. Flip the page here. So. Then we get to a couple others. I don't know if they're necessarily the same, um but conversion of first floor commercial space to residential. Um that's a new, so if you have a building with first floor commercial space and you want to make it residential. Or a portion thereof, um I made that a special perk.
So wouldn't that be P B?
Oh, yes, sorry. And. The next one I added was similar, but it's residential uses on the first floor of a building, so.
We're not, we're not gonna make it man.
Yeah.
So that was uh Jim's discussion and Gar's discussion as well.
And I think Kathy had the idea of the first thirty feet of the from the street.
Many, many, yeah.
Might be something.
How would that work?
So you would um.
So you could have it the back.
So for example. I didn't, I didn't put any of that language in this first run-through. So we can have some some additional discussions about whether you want to require that, but. That would be kind of the example of seven central. We give him a special permit to have first floor in the back. And above for three residential units and um but the front part of the street is commercial.
Think about the allow versus require, right?
Wasn't there some uh. Early discussion with cargo about. Having the front of that street level be potentially. At office gallop, something like that, and they they said no.
No, they didn't say no, they said. Car zoning, you need a special permit to do this, so we're.
So they would have, they would.
But they're designing it, I believe, to accommodate that kind of.
Yeah.
Meaning zoning gets changed in time before they start building.
I didn't propose any notes, the changes, I haven't gone through the yeah, like a page and a half of notes and I don't know whether some of the notes. Need to get adjusted for downtown district, but um.
To be determined.
Exactly, to be determined.
Is there mixed use? Any kind of mixed use allowed?
Well, again, that's that's kind of where we have, I have to go into. Whatever we have in our zoning related to change of use and kind of exempt or or change that language. Or um. What if the downtown district?
So your question, Mark, uh Chris was if there's no mixed use allowed?
No, it's not explicitly in these.
Yeah, well, that's that's. And and my question is, is it explicitly prohibited elsewhere? I mean, I know it's it's something that.
That's why it'd be good to clarify. Say no, 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 yes.
Let me add that to this here clarified.
No livestock and no poultry, I guess, damn. Chicken, so, brochures.
Okay, so then we get to the dimensional requirements. And um. So again, I'm showing the general district, then the downtown district. Um and this is our current uh setback and lot requirement. So I kept the lot size the same as six thousand square feet. Kept the frontage the same at sixty feet. The uh. Minimum lot width, I kept the same at fifty.
So why zero set that?
That's what's in the downtown now.
So that's, yeah, so your traditional downtown and many of your buildings are right up abutting next to each other or up. You know, at the sidewalk, so um. That is.
So you're saying if someone wanted to build a private home, they would have to build that right on the back of sidewalk.
Well, they're not required to, it's not, it's not, it's not a required. Setback, it is, you can build up to.
The minimum.
Hold it up to the all and see all the way around, hold it up to zero, you're made to clearly want.
I mean, some downtowns do have like maximum setbacks as well. So they have a minimum and then they have a max so that you don't stick your. Building in the back and you pick up that streetscape and. That creates, even if you have to walk past a residential home, it's something there that you're walking past, you don't feel like. There's a parking lot in the front, the other thing is if someone does want to do a commercial property business. But once they have a big parking lot, once everyone sees it, they stick the parking lot up front and building in the back. And then that also breaks up the streetscape and the pedestrian likelihood of people walking past parking lots. Um so a lot of village centers will have a minimum and a maximum. Zero and ten or fifteen feet at the max. Or a front setback.
Yeah, it might be good.
Yeah. Not sure how you format it was.
Oh, you probably have to add a new column. And then, you know, have a maximum and. And and yeah, and then most of the districts, because we have to put it down for each of the districts, it would be, there'd be zero. You know, if there's no maximum setback, the residential districts, but uh only in this district, it would be the number.
Yeah, I do too.
Uh lot coverage requirements. Lot coverage requirement, so right now in the general district, you can only cover forty percent of the lot with a structure. And a maximum of seventy percent of the lot with infervious surfaces. Um so in the downtown district, I changed that to seventy and ninety percent.
And how do you come up with this?
Uh well, ninety percent allows for some green, little bit, a little buttering. Um if the building is set back a little bit, um.
But it doesn't have to be.
Which it doesn't have to be, gives them a little green in the back or whatever, but I mean, you really do want to encourage. As much development as possible, this is your core area and you really do wanna. Wanna make it uh as dense, you know, again, you don't wanna build it necessarily up. But you do want this kind of commercials core.
Well, we don't want. Treeless. Green was spaces either. And what was more of?
Narison wise, how does this fit into other communities of our size? Do we have like a rough?
I think I used similar numbers years ago and we can do Hampshire before they do the downtown district there.
Uh oh, there's no industry, I I did, is this a industry standard or this?
Not really. Place and kind of more urbanized, um. Even even small towns, but they might have already a core developed area, I'm sure, maybe a hundred percent lot coverage.
Uh and the other thing is, you know, just the environmental impact of not. Where water can go. I don't know, ninety percent seems high to me, but. I don't think.
Alright.
Support that with a little data.
Yeah, I'll I'll see if I can't dig up a few more communities that you might be familiar with and see what their requirements are. I mean, one of the nice things is is here, we're, you know, we're all on water sewer, so that helps. A lot in allowing for much denser. Uh footprint, so. So um here's a question. Height regulations, I didn't necessarily propose anything, but it's asked a question. Do we want to increase the height to three and a half stories or forty-five feet instead of our current two and a half stories and thirty-five feet? Maybe by special permit.
Based upon how folks felt through the M B T A zoning process, I would say no.
Okay.
So would would we not consider something not having a forty-five foot flat face at the back sidewalk? Would we consider something that's tiered back off it, but still giving the full height?
I don't know, um. I just know how folks react.
There are, there are a bunch of buildings in the downtown and in the general. That are forty-five feet.
I know.
So it's a little. I mean, I'm tempted to say special permit and see what happens.
That could be, could be.
I would agree with Chris, like just putting.
What was the feedback on that height restriction? And and like the reasoning.
I I think it's the the idea of scale of the downtown.
Yeah, that's.
And that smaller is better in general, but but a lot of, I mean, a lot of the pushback we got was. This idea we're building Rantoul Street in Beverly.
Well, but also in residential, I mean, there are, there's still neighborhood. People live in these neighborhoods and when you go up higher, you block the light. And you know, also when you increase the footprint, you. It blocks light, I mean, there there's that kind of concern.
Yeah, there are other things that were constrained height as well, like. So parking for, you know, residential uses. Limit the amount of development you can do.
That your answer? I liked how you put four question marks after that too, Mark.
See how residents feel with that.
Well, I think, um, you know, uh, again, just like with the M B T A. We wanna make the change and have the same diff- districts that will make a difference. But uh if it's gonna be like a deal breaker, you don't want to throw it in there and this was. Perceived, what when people did make a big deal over it in the M B T A and if. They might do the same and it might be a deal breaker and so you probably don't want to include it, but I thought we should at least discuss.
As I recall, one of the vote no against three A was just that. The balloon. Yeah, question about cargo, what's the height of that building, it's three story five. It's thirty-five, right?
Yeah, so it's two and a half.
You live in the man's.
Sure, two and a half is okay, it's a half story.
That's considered a half a story? Why is that?
Because it's a roof.
It's a full, full living.
It's a man's side roof.
Man's side roof, yeah, that's all that you want, but it still has living inside it, is that not? That not viable with twenty-five feet? As I recall. Drawings that they shared, it was the same height as the building. Is it the residential one to its left as you look at it, or I think it was the same.
The same height of the one has one school street. The same height as the ones across on Central Street.
So one school street, that's more than two stories, that's definitely.
Two and a half and three, yeah.
Yeah, there's two and a half again. I'm trying to figure out how that all works.
Your apartment's on that half story on one school street.
Oh, it's something to consider with the height.
Okay.
Alright, um. accessory structures. So. Right now it says in the general district, accessory structure has to be set back five feet. On the side and rear lines and apparently. accessory structure should be set back from the street on which the lot has frontage, at least applicable minimum. From setback for such. So it's at least ten feet, um so I I wasn't sure what you wanted to do here, I I kind of left it blank. Um we're probably not gonna have a lot of accessory structures in the downtown district. You want to keep it the same as the general, you just want to make it zero. So I I don't have a lot of. Concern either way, let's say.
So that's zero outline, it's allowable.
Well, right now it's.
Zero setback, zero outline.
Yeah, 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 it would be if you, I put zero, but um. For side and rear, um because if we're gonna allow. Zero for the primary structure on sides and. These are for accessory, so.
I don't know, I think we gotta think about this.
Okay, so that's why. I thought for the the side and the rear zero and the front, I left blank, Chris, I don't know. About that.
Oh, I see what you did.
The side and rear, I I did zero because we're we would, I proposed zero for the sides for the primary structure, so.
When the front yard, we want zero is a minimum. When the front yard we want zero is a minimum.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
You don't like that?
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
In a kind of sunny urban denser environment, you do build right up to the back side besides. Maybe not the same with family house, but.
So, um, the next. Section is uh parking requirements, section six. And so what I did here is I took our new news. Which I said, um, hotel motel is, I said. Hotel or in a hotel, uh, one space per overnight room. So that would be added and then.
So can I ask you, where does that, is that a past? Bylaw that we had for like when we had the old corner in, was there any?
No, no requirements, non-conforming.
Right.
We've never let her, well. Ever since zoning was. Been in place in the nineteen forties, no one's ever proposed.
Okay. So, one space per overnight room. I don't know anything about that industry in urban environments, is that?
It's kind of typical.
Is it? Okay.
It seems high to me.
It does, it sounds like a lot.
Um, say you have a ten. Room or eight room, you have to have eight spaces, um.
On the weekends, you're gonna be presumably, or all summer long, presumably up here, you're gonna be booked. Um, almost every night and then when there are events and weddings and. Um, all those other things, the place is gonna be full, so everyone's gonna have.
You're gonna bring your car.
We'll we'll have a car.
We might come on the train.
A few people might come on the train, but some people might come with two cars, so.
So we have space for loading docks and uh.
That that would be reviewed under site plan review, so you don't need to add anything special.
Okay, so so play that out, picture one, any of the buildings downtown gets purchased and they wanna convert it to a. Hotel or any.
Boutique hotel with ten units.
Six or seven, whatever, ten units. And it's right on. Um, you know, the main road there. Or are you gonna just put them on the street, you're gonna?
Oh, then they wouldn't. But if, let's say you're gonna put like the bank building or Santander's. That's kind of a deep lot, they have some parking in the back, someone knocked that down, built a. Federal style three, you know, um, nice little boutiquey hotel with twelve units, they probably can park twelve cars in the back. So.
Yeah, or the K P N savings bank building, that could be.
Yeah.
Let's go parking.
All that in front of it, right?
Or in Harbor Point.
Or Harbor Point.
Maybe I'll do.
Alright.
So, then here's the thing is add new section six point one point nine for the downtown district. And this is also under parking. Commercial uses in the downtown district shall be exempt from parking requirements except for the following uses. Adult entertainment uses, hotels and inns, fast food restaurants, motor vehicle. Light service stations, repair body shops for motor vehicles and marijuana businesses. So. You says that you don't entirely wanna encourage downtown, I did not wanna exempt them from parking.
Adult entertainment and marijuana businesses are already not allowed downtown.
I I just went through the youth chart. So.
Yeah, I think that's true.
So, um, and so I didn't exempt residential. So if someone wants to build a residential, put two units above like their commercial space, they would have to provide. Whatever our current use chart requires, so, um. So I didn't wanna exempt residential uses, um.
Something to think about.
But I thought, you know, a a good example again is seven central street, they have the required. Parking spaces for spaces behind the building for the residential, but they don't have any. Commercial space, uh, parking.
So maybe you.
That's the way it was.
Maybe you and the downtown will not require parking.
It comes to fire, it would require the one space.
No, because this was in a half mile of train station.
Yeah, point.
So I I, you know, it's something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, in in trying to get this passed, I thought people would be more upset about exempting all residential parking. Then understanding that we have. Uh, free parking, we have parking lots, there are places to park for your. Uh, commercial, but you probably don't want your residential. People taking up those spaces, so if you wanna convert residential, we provide those people with onsite parking. And so allow for. Vehicle pop, site parking elsewhere or commercial.
Something to think about. Well, that's a great yard and the math is really helpful, thank you. So what should our next step be on this?
Well, the next step will be our first meeting in September. Uh, to go through. More, little more detail of this, do this again, I'll make the corrections, so I'll have a little more information about lot coverage. Um, I'll address the mixed use, so find out that specific answer. Um, from, uh. And, uh, and then I'll read through like the. Some of the other sections to make sure that. This new district isn't affected negatively by some other requirement elsewhere in our zoning. I would then recommend that we, after that meeting. Between the two September meetings, we do a.
A walk forum, yeah.
Public forum and a walk.
Yeah.
We're doing the same, uh, who people want first and have a public sit down with people.
So if we did wanna try and. Craft something, but for a November town meeting, what kind of deadline are we up against? In terms of having public hearings and forums before those.
So generally, that's why I'm trying to push to have one in between the September meetings. Generally, we'd like to to need a schedule is have. Draft voted by the end of September.
Okay.
So that that can get submitted to the select board, brought back to the planning board so that I can post public hearings. For October or early. Early November, the date's not set, but they're anticipating. Um, if the planning board wants to move forward with this, that there would be an early November town meeting.
Okay. So any other questions from the board on, uh? Downtown. Um, so what does the board think about taking public comment now on this? Before we move on to driveways and.
I guess a good idea, yes, well, it's fresh.
Okay, so any comment from the public, questions, comments on? Uh, the discussion of the downtown district.
There are no hands raised. Well.
Oh, there's Eli.
Hey. Um, so in terms of your timeline for a November, um, town meeting. There's a twenty-eight day notice from when the town meeting is gonna occur for any petition articles. I don't envision that there would be any, however, we would want to broadcast that there was going to be a town meeting. And that the petition articles actually. Desire, it would be desired that anybody wanting to put to do a petition article would go through the select board first. And to see if the select board would take it up, that requires a certain amount of lead time. Um, so my point is, um, if you want to pull the trigger, so to speak. On a November town meeting. Doing it late in, um, the September timeframe is kind of pushing it. And I'm just offering that for your consideration.
That's really helpful. So we need to make some decisions probably early September then. Sounds like.
At the very latest. You're you're honestly, you're, it's a little bit late to be doing, um, this right now. Um, it would be helpful for us to have a a concrete kind of decision. No later than early September. So that we could broadcast this to people a little bit earlier.
So in terms of a concrete decision, yes.
Whether or not you're gonna have a town meeting.
Okay, I see.
That's different from the actual scene, you know.
Right, right.
Oh, we, you would have to almost decide that you definitely wanna submit this in some form. At the end of September.
Thank you, Eli, that's very helpful.
Sure thing.
Any comments or questions from the public? Do we need none? Let's go on to Mark you, oh, let's do the driveways. You're up again.
Uh, so driveways, so we've, um, had some discussions. Asked about driveways, um. And, um, it's been working fairly well, having public works issue most driveway. Terms nowadays, um. You various things have come up, uh, so. Board just asked me to put some edits together, uh, some are public safety related. Some are from public works and some are the desire of the board to make some edits and changes. So, um. One minute to pull these up. So we'll do the general bylaw first.
And is that the current article twelve?
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, article seven.
It's, uh, well, I would. Um, go to the bylaw, which is section forty-six, the red line version. Somehow.
Oh, yeah, got it.
Yeah, now people can see that.
Great.
Okay, so, um. So this is our current bylaw, the red lines of the changes, um, that we came up with. Uh, so under purpose, uh, obviously, public safety would like us to add. That, um, to ensure adequate public safety access is one of the purposes. Of the, um, bylaw, which is what it is as well, so, uh, we, that's in there. So. We also removed things that we had standards in the regulations and in the bylaw. And so the bylaw should, is what authorizes you to write standards, which you adopt as regulation. So anything that was a regulation, so many feet. You know, a driveway has to be twenty feet from the nearest street intersection is a standard. So we removed that and, um, in that case, it was already in. Many of these are already in the bylaw, it was just kind of redundant to to leave them in in the, I mean. I'm using the regulations, uh, so we we proposed to take them out of the bylaw. So the first, uh, sentence that says all driveway entrances shall be located at least twenty feet from the nearest street. In this section, ten feet from the nearest driveway entrance, fire hydrant, five feet from lot lines, trees, utility clothes. Street fixtures will be removed, um, then. Next one, next one's a goal, shall be, the entrances should be designed to maximize visibility in all directions. And to minimize the flow of water on a public wear and just property, so that is something that you wanna keep within the. The bylaw, but you don't need the regulations, cause it's not an actual regulation. Uh, then there's, we remove, there shall be no more than one apron and curb cut on a residential lot. Um, I just added some language here that says they should be designed to avoid. Reduction of on-street parking. Et cetera. So. And it says residential uses shall utilize only one driveway entrance unless otherwise allowed by the regulations. For driveway entrances, so the regulations govern the number of of driveway entrances. Uh, and not the bylaw. Um, and then driveway width, again, we're getting into regulations. It says driveway width as it is approaches the driveway entrance. She'll have a minimum of eight feet and maximum twelve feet width, combined driveway flare of five feet on either side of the driveway. And needed curb return, again, that's a standard, so we took that out. Um, we left in. You know, uh, again, the goal of keeping it, uh, the. Architectural access board standards, it is standards in public work standards.
Well, can I interrupt you with one question?
Yep.
So the standards are already in the regulations. And the regulations are, um, obligated by who?
The planning.
The planning board, okay.
And the the bylaw already authorizes the planning board to adopt regulations. So I didn't make any changes to, um. Uh, administration and enforcement, it says the owner must submit to driveway entrance application. Set application shall be subject to regulations developed by the planning board and modified from time to time. Uh, so that doesn't change, that's where, uh, your authorization is. Then curb cuts that do not comply with the criteria here and or in the pin- opinion of the DPW. Should require a special review, may be permitted if the submittal is approved by the planning board. So.
So, but the criteria defined here in, have we taken that out?
Yes. So it should be the criteria defined in the regulations. And I removed special permit, I just said it's approved by the planning board, so. So it's a.
What other mechanisms do we have to approve something?
Well, that's where it's a little big, so. I mean, to be honest, to be honest, uh, yes. You know, we could leave it as a special permit, I still feel that's kind of. You know, we could leave it as a special permit. I still feel that's kind of a high standard. Although it's discretionary, so and you can attach conditions. It can be waived and you know, it's. So the, you know, that's again, kind of something to discuss.
To our responsibilities of approval of driveways that don't meet the regulations.
So. So but there should be a mechanism whereby if someone is told no by Public Works for some reason. It was it's not safe or it's not adequately addressing drainage or whatever the issue is. That someone can appeal that decision or or apply to the planning boards for a special permit or some sort of a rule.
I guess we need to think about that one.
Yes, yeah. Taking taking the decision making away from the DPW.
Right.
Which is what we wanted to do in the first place. I mean, we wanted to give them the.
So. But in instances where they don't need the standard, there's a lot of flexibility, at least they have a mechanism to.
Yeah.
Maybe it should be a special permit because you really don't want to encourage them to come before the planning board. Because sure, you you could approve it, but you can attach conditions that they don't want to comply with from Public Works, so. Then.
No.
So, so maybe you want to keep a higher standard as a special permit, so something to think about. So down here at the bottom, we added, we didn't have anything about enforcement who enforces it. And so this bylaw shall be enforced by the Director of Public Works. It's good, so.
But if we have a special permit, would DPW end up having to enforce the conditions of the special permit?
Yes.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't get away from the driveway.
A circular drive. Okay, all right. So what's our next step on this?
So the next step on this would be to finalize the language. This this would have to go to town meeting for approval.
It's not a sorry change, though. It's a bylaw change, is that right?
Yes, it's a general bylaw change. So I will.
Different hearing requirements or same hearing. Prior to town.
Let's say similar.
Okay.
I haven't changed the bylaw in a few years, so. I'll look at. Actually. Planning board actually wouldn't be required to hold that because it's a general bylaw, I believe, this. Hold the public hearing.
Okay.
But I'll I'll have your answer for the.
So again, would it be reasonable to send these to general council or town council for comment at this stage or?
Yeah, because at this stage, I think this these regulate. Edited regulations are. Yeah, yeah, we can get the, I don't think we're gonna change this very much. So we could send this to council to get any like little language adjustments or something, can get that out of the way. And then. Yeah. Then we get to the regulations.
Okay. And so is the regulations that DPW and the fires department have weighed in on?
That's correct. They stay out, so. So I met with both of them. I made a full set of changes. They sent back a couple items, I mentioned those. So the the first change is under application requirements. So you should no longer file it with the clerk. You just file it on Open show, which goes directly to Public Works. So. And application, application fee as determined by the public works department. So we're removing the hundred dollar fee and that will determine what the fee shall be.
And will that be published in here once they determine that or is that just based on a case by case basis?
Yeah, they'll put it on the website, what the fees are.
Not like they charge you one fee and me another or there'll be a standard fee on the website, okay?
Yes.
Just checking.
So these, which has to do with drawing up plans as does C. D also talks about plans. And E talks about features on the plans like hydrants, trees, drains, and. The next one talks about calculations of the previous coverage. And then the final one is the Public Works, which is new. Is the Public Works Director can waive, modify any of the above requirements, provided there's enough information submitted to determine whether the standards of the driveway entrance bylaw and these regulations are being met. So. So these are pretty strict set of standards to have people, you know, draw up. Very detailed plans like this for driveway entrance. Now, if it's a new lot. But someone's developing, they're already going to have most of this information. That'll be fine. But if someone's just shifting their driveway over ten feet or something like that, it's. It doesn't always require this today as it is, so.
So that's why the waiver.
So that's exactly why the waiver is there.
So they had a question about. Did there be a provision for a second curve cut for an approved ABU?
Yeah, that was a question I'd. I don't think there should be. We had talked about that during our.
Right.
To think we're requiring the users, yes.
Yes. So then we get to review of applications and we're removing the first sentence, which says the John Furt will forward the application to. Department of Public Works to review and approval with a copy sent to the building inspectors, so. That gets reviewed because they file it on the online permitting system directly with Public Works. Then the criteria for driveway entrances. So. We get to the number of driveway entrances, which is B, we propose changes there. So. Residential lots shall be limited to a single driveway entrance. That we have, unless the second driveway entrance will eliminate the need for vehicles to back out onto streets. Onto back out onto the flooding roadway. Loop driveways are driveways which have entrances onto two different streets may be permitted by the Public Works. Provided all entrances meet the width, setback drainage, grading requirements.
So on the backing up, I mean, every second driveway would reduce or eliminate the need for vehicles to back out, right?
Well, you have hammerheads when you back. We're just on this just about entrances.
Right.
So if if let's say you have a house with a big parking area in the front, like your house is set back. And you can turn around there, then they can not approve that because there's no need for it.
Okay.
But if your house is fifty feet back from the street. And the only way in and out of a bit is to back right out. But you have enough front yard space to do a little loop and make it look nice, then. That's that's a safety.
Like that house we talked about on school street.
Right.
Yeah, that's a perfect example.
Yes.
So what are the, I mean, there are. Disadvantages to consider too, like you're cutting up, you're cutting out green space by making two entrances. You're making it harder for pedestrians and just trying to think of reasons.
I would argue against that. You're making it harder for pedestrians because if there's a sidewalk there, it's going to be constructed in such a manner as not to obstruct the sidewalk and the same number of vehicles. So having two entrances does not increase the number of vehicle trips to in and out of a property. That's just determined by who lives there, right? So so you're not increasing the number of trips. You're not really increasing the number of conflicts between possible. You know, the number of times a vehicle goes across the sidewalk onto the street. You're actually making it safer by having half of those vehicle trips or a number of them. Where the driver is like looking at the sidewalk as opposed to like trying to back up and see. Sure, there's no pedestrian behind them and they also make sure cars are coming at the same time, so.
Good point.
So these are regulations, so we just get to approve these ourselves.
That's correct. After a public hearing.
Yeah. So we don't need to worry about timelines for Tommy. And in fact, we don't have, we shouldn't be adopting these until after the town meeting.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think it would help that town meeting to say, Marty worked out a regulation. These are the reasons why we're amending by law.
No effect.
Okay. Width driveway width is defined as the drivable surface area capable of supporting fire apparatus. A driveway width as it approaches the driveway entrance shall have a minimum of ten feet and a maximum of twelve feet in width. That's the support is the fire trucks, which he needs a minimum of ten feet to get in. And on longer driveways, he needs twelve feet.
Wow.
I don't understand why. How wide is a backtrack?
Pretty wide. Yeah. So. Because they have mirrors as well that stick out.
That doesn't require paved surface.
So. So I changed the minimum width of the entrance along the edge of the roadway pavement to ten feet from eight feet. And then. Provided the primary structure is located within fifty feet of the roadway, otherwise the maximum shall be twelve feet. So again, that's having to do with driving down driveway smaller. The houses within fifty feet, you may not even drive in the.
Fifty feet, Martin, and a hundred feet.
This was a hundred. No, that's crossed off.
Oh, that's crossed off. By my.
Should be. Okay.
Okay, you got it.
The driveways more than a hundred feet like this will be a minimum of twelve feet. All driveways, first, this was just sent to me by the chief today. It says all driveways for structures located within fifty feet from the roadway shall have an unobstructed area. That. There shall be clear of constructions twenty feet wide and thirteen feet tall. To ensure fire department apparatus access.
Wow, that's crazy.
That doesn't seem realistic.
So that's not the the surface he drives on. That's just the.
I know.
The border that he drives through.
That's like tree, people have trees on their property.
Well, that's what he would like, so.
Unless he's got a chainsaw business.
So again, you know, these are a lot of what we're is improvements over what there is, so. That's what he would like. A special permit from the planning board is required if the driveway is less than the minimum required.
We could end up with a lot of driveway special permits.
Yeah, we gotta be careful.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
No.
Well, you're not going to have driveways that are less than eight feet or even ten feet because they won't get get permits to do that, so. And it'll affect the ability to get a building to.
Right.
You know. You know, it's a basically it's a public safety. They do have to get in here.
Right.
But they are pretty good drivers.
Yeah, a lot of practice on some of the roads here. So then we get to the chart. Chart here and Nate. You know, saying they can change all the numbers on the chart, they can remove some of the specific numbers. So that it just shows. How you'd like it to be constructed, but without the numbers which are actually in.
Yeah, that's the chart and like what's in the regulations, for sure.
So then I don't think we have. Yeah, here it says we can either remove or can edit the PDF to remove the numbers or make it for illustrative purpose. Then we get to a new section I added for commercial driveways. And I said new commercial driveways shall be reviewed by the planning board under safe plan review and show from five with. And CMR five twenty seven, which is the fire safety code. So if it's a new development or rehab.
Like downtown.
So if it's a new development, you're going to be reviewing it. So. The only thing where it'd be a little cumbersome would be is if someone already has a commercial building.
Right.
And they want to move the driveway from one place to another. So they're going to have to come before the board, but it's site plan review, so it's so less cumbersome process. To to have that driveway shifted or changed to a different location on the property. But given the limited number of commercial properties we have in the community, I don't think that's overly. Bring this requirement.
And if it turns out to be, we can change the regulations.
In the RIS. Everything else was mostly the same except for the last one on E. Which says. So this was if you were denied. From the. By Public Works, you can apply for a special permit from the planning board with an additional seventy-five application fee. So if someone's applying for a planning board special permit, they should. So if someone's applying for a planning board special permit, they should follow all the regular procedures, including like fees for a special permit because we have to process it the exact same way, so. Um so we got rid of the seventy five dollar fee and said they have to pay the regular fee and we've got a special one, so. Uh that's it.
Okay. So what do we do next?
So what do we do next? Um so I will um make revisions to the bylaw, make some revisions to the regulations. Send the bylaw to council to be looked at. Um and then we'll also have it on the agenda for early September.
Okay. Busy September.
Yes, yes, wait the rest of August while you can.
So I'm just wondering, what would people think about doing our walk around the commercial district? Or part of our our September eighth meeting?
No, before or.
Or as part of it, maybe.
Yeah.
And yeah, I'll talk to them.
Yeah.
These are fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like that idea.
Okay. If that has a possibility.
Invite the public to join us.
You know, stroll through the town, make an alert all the uh the store owners.
Right.
And ban out of it. They were looking for one.
Right.
Number, Chamber of Commerce.
Well, thank you, Mark.
Mm hmm.
Um so did we need to talk about charts right now? That's the next thing on the agenda.
Oh, well, um now that's true.
Could I ask a point of information?
Yes, you can, of course.
The uh proposed changes to the driving driveway bylaws, those in are then general bylaws, is that correct?
Yes.
So the bylaw, yes, that's general bylaw, the regulations are planning board.
Right, so um what would be the actual effect on uh driveways that were nonconforming if we pass that bylaw?
They um so.
Existing existing drive.
They can remain, our current bylaw says all driveway entrances in existence prior to the adoption of this bylaw shall not require a review unless they are substantially modified or relocated. So existing um driveways are not affected by this any anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Senior housing, do you wanna?
Yeah, we can do it pretty quickly.
Okay.
So if we're going to attack senior housing for the fall, I mean, we have to make some very quick decisions. And luckily, the planning board has already discussed senior housing for the past five or six years. And we've even put it on the warrant for a town meeting, but because there were issues with the way the town meeting technically was being conducted, we were unable to get to the this particular warrant article. So I I think the question for the planning board is I've given you the language of of what was going to be on those warrants. If there are no significant changes to them, we can probably put it on for the fall, it's not going to require a lot of work, they've been reviewed by town council and so forth. If we want to make significant changes to that language, it probably shouldn't be for the fall, it's too much on our plate. So I want to ask the board some very simple questions. And assuming everybody thinks that senior housing in general is a good idea, that we should be doing it. But if anybody thinks otherwise, let's get that out of the way right away. Nobody thinks it's a bad.
I think it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
High priority.
All right, so I'm gonna tell you the issues to consider. Should senior facilities, housing facilities be allowed in all districts? Or do we want to limit them to specific districts? Not sure we need to answer those tonight, but if somebody says we propose them for all districts in the past. So so a deal breaker might be if you say, well, no, we don't, we want to accept District E from senior housing, then I think that's going to cause complication that might knock us out of its fall town meeting.
What what would be the reason to do that?
Uh we don't want senior housing in a particular district for whatever reason.
Right, but I mean, and why, why not?
Well, I. I'm sorry.
Can senior housing perhaps?
Maybe, I mean, the people have this idea that senior housing is a, you know, this Brookly Village with, you know, a hundred units. But it's not, it can be five or six units.
Which is all defined in your.
Yes, yeah, I just make that clear, but yeah. So is everybody okay with all districts for that?
Such as this new.
Yeah. With the downtown, sure.
I would think just just not knowing facts, I would think it would be appropriate for most districts, but maybe not for all. I think that's something we need to discuss.
Well, we don't have a lot of time to discuss it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a short discussion, we could do the same zoning map I'm looking at right here. See what the likely maybe just maybe just one or two that shouldn't like the downtown district perhaps.
Well, I would think the downtown district would be the best place.
That's what I just said. I know, talked with you enough to know that you you've got your, you've got some hot slide stuff there.
Has has anybody brought any points up to argue against this as?
I think, well, we've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um because I was not on the board in November, but discussions since then um have centered around, you know, traffic. Um you know, aides coming in and out to help. It's really no different from any other hall with visitors coming in and out, it was traffic was one.
In the traffic, yeah, true.
Try, I can't remember the others.
So what one of the, so this, I think that the discussion was like the D district, would that be, because uh those are lots of little small houses and suddenly you're going to plunk some larger facility in the middle of it. Would that be appropriate, would that mess up traffic on Pleasant Street or something? Uh we tried to point out that in fact, senior housing generates much less traffic than typical single family house does and uh so I think that issue was discussed and resolved.
I wondered, does the advent of the ADU zoning play any role? Because that wasn't really in effect.
It might, yeah, it might, I mean, it would certainly help in if you have senior parents that you want to give.
It might, it might create more support for this.
Yeah, it might, yes, that's right. So that's the first issue. Uh second one. A lot of different things, and by the way, when I want to point out, remind everybody that nursing homes, which are senior housing facilities, very institutional, but that's what they are, they're allowed by special permits in any district right now. So we're looking for presence.
We have not seen a lot of applications.
We have not seen a lot of applications for nursing.
Have you seen any?
We never got it, they're not allowed, so we never got. We might get a lot, I don't know. Um. Should there be uh specific age restrictions? Should we require, for example, that all residents be sixty five or older or fifty five or older? A second resident, should they be, it's a spouse, should they be the same age, should they be younger? There'd be um a child living there, it's a, you know, an adult child eighteen or older.
Well, the proposal initially.
Initially, there was no age restrictions at all, senior housing is for people fifty five and older.
Fifty five and older.
Yeah, but uh the revised one says one of one member of the household has to be fifty five or older and no one living there can be younger than eighteen.
Yeah, that makes sense. Where are you reading from, Chris?
Well, this is the thing I sent out to everybody.
Oh.
Uh I think those are really the only issues, I think, unless people have questions about some of these.
So the only the only question I would have is, I I I read that, I don't remember it as well as I should. So it might be great to allow us all to read it one last time and then I think if we meet in early September and there's still no issues, then I think we'd have time, right?
Yeah, I think so, I think we can do it.
Yeah.
Because it's already drafted and approved.
Right. Here's my thinking too, because I have booked, Chris, I have my little little journey up to the top of the mountain many times, it's just, we sit down, as long as you talk about this stuff, the uh I'm afraid if we don't bring this up, if it doesn't bring to the floor, we're going to lose the opportunity if there is a site available that then it may be developable for senior housing, such as the one right off Pleasant Street, again, where the public works department leaves it. And if we miss that opportunity, that's that's a missed thing. I think bringing this up to the fore may maybe a larger opportunity for more development or and maybe even outside. I don't know, I think it's a good thing.
I think in general, everyone I've talked to thinks it's a great idea, people get concerned about whether these all have to be, you know, maybe we want uh sometimes you see things like a five acre minimum lot size. But if you're only doing three units, that doesn't make very much sense. Um so I think it should be left open and and to be lot coverage and dimensional requirements that we spelled out that kind of take care of that problem. That the all the height restrictions would be the same, so no one is going to be, and it would be a special permit, so there'd be um review um to make sure that they meet all the performance standards.
I agree.
Um any questions or comments from the public on senior housing? Also, I forgot to ask about driveways or driveways. Okay, seeing none. Um so how do you want to proceed?
So I guess at the next meeting, I want everybody to read the all that stuff again and come with questions and comments and if we're still good to go, we make a decision then.
I agree, perfect.
And I think one uh thing to weigh is um how many of these initiatives can we do in the fall? I mean, we may want to pick one. Um we may want to try for them all, but I think we just need to be realistic about the amount of work um that will be required to bring driveways downtown and senior housing all.
I think that'd be a question for the slide board as well.
Yeah.
Didn't we at at the first meeting of this group or or the first identify the projects that we wanted to focus on?
Yes.
I think those three were the ones that we focused on.
Yeah, that's why we brought them.
Yes.
Beautiful, nice continuity. Just check, just check it.
The question is, can we get them all three um accomplished for this? In this fall.
When you say this fall, are you meaning prior for town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and Eli already outlined it.
Right.
Yeah, so the clock is ticking.
Yep.
Um all right, liaison updates, I'm historic commission, we're meeting Thursday. That will be my first meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Affordable housing is meeting on the twentieth.
I think we're just doing historic commission, the school building committee.
Excuse.
Sarah only wants to do a couple so that we don't run through the whole.
I got nothing to say anyway, so.
Thank goodness. School building.
That's the Essex School Building Committee, by the way. The elementary school, so I just told Chris a little bit ago where we selected the owner's project manager already and we are selecting the architect tomorrow, so this is tomorrow morning, they thought to do the interview, so it's it's a hot topic. And this is going to turn into some sort of reality. The reason why it's on here is because of my little statement of a couple weeks ago. One of the considerations is modification of the of the elementary school, it'll be just finished here, it's 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 a bit farfetched, that's I tell you. I've seen seen some of the architects uh recommendations, not recommendations, their first first pass at it. It's a bit farfetched, so I don't think that will be the one, it's definitely not the preferred choice. But it is one that the MSBA, the MSA School Building Authority is asking us to consider. Renovation, modification, build new, wherever the build new is, and then work on the wall, so it's just something. Right, and I forgive me, I have to add the facilities planning is start on Friday of this week, we have our first meeting at nine o'clock on Friday morning. Talk about it. And we're going to be talking about.
We're keeping you busy, we're keeping you busy, I agree.
Okay.
Earning your salary.
I did double what I did right now.
Um correspondence, I didn't see any.
Nope.
Minutes, is it just the
Yeah.
Um and that looked fine, except Chris only is not mentioned as being present, but he was present because he made motions during the the minute, so we need to add him as being present. Anybody else have any comments on the minutes?
I was uh I was not in the last meeting, so I was absent.
Were you there on the twelfth, uh the date of the minutes?
No, he hadn't started yet.
Oh, right, of course, right, right, right.
And I wasn't present either.
Okay, then we can't vote on the right, right? It's the three of us, okay, well, sorry, we'll have to vote.
These are the AI net states.
Well, they're much, they're perfect, except for adding Chris. Okay, motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
All in favor? Thank you.
Nice job, Sue.
Yeah.
Thank you all, that was a lot. And Mark, thank you.